Hello, the Jefferson County Post is here today with Jefferson County Commission Chairman Jimmy Carmichael. And we're going to be talking about what's going on in Jefferson County. And we're going to be answering some questions and debunking some myths that seem to be circling in Jefferson County to set the record straight. And before we do that, though, I want to jump in and thank our sponsors for this video. Dr. Warren Stinson, a dentist in Jefferson City at 113 East Broadway in Jefferson City. Dr. Stinson is a fantastic dentist. He answers his clients' needs and he's very accessible. So you give Dr. Stinson a shout for all your dull needs. And the Danards Brewing Company at 1237 Gay Street. They have live music on Friday and Saturday nights, open every day for lunch and for dinner. So give them a look and be sure to have a nice meal over at the Danards Brewing Company. Enjoy some good music. Now, we're going to talk to Chairman Carmichael. We've been doing these for a long time, these videos for a long time.
We sure have.
And we're trying to hit one every quarter. Now, we've just entered into a new fiscal year, correct?
Sure.
July the 1st. So when we last spoke, I think it was April. And you were looking at a budget deficit. Now, the budget has been passed and that deficit has been answered. How did you guys take care of that?
Well, how we took care of it is earlier in the year when we passed that new wheel tax, that reinstated a lot of the money that we needed from the previous one that left us. And what it has been is it's been divided up differently to where the new tax is actually spread out between roads. Infrastructure is spread out into the emergency services. It's buying place cars, ambulances. It bought fire trucks. And it's actually going to highway expense now.
So before, it wasn't necessarily divided out that way. And it is less than what it was before, correct? Is it like, what, $35?
It is. It is $35 now. And actually, the one that sunsetted was $25.
Oh, okay.
And see, we had to replace that revenue. So when the county's commission debunked that, the first time it come up for a renewal vote, we lost that money at the end of that year. So last year was a transitional year that what we needed was to replace that funding. And we actually went through, I believe it was two cycles before it actually got replaced. And see, that put us more or less of what I would call behind the eight ball. Is that last year was that year that we needed to play catch-up and the wheel tax wasn't enough to get us back with what come up. So we had to look at a property tax increase of six cents.
So it's six cents. So you went from $1.43 to $1.49. Now, that's a little confusing to people because before that, the tax was actually, what, $235?
I believe it was in that neighborhood.
Yeah. And so what happened was there was a mass reassessment of property, which is, this is one myth we wanted to debunk. Did the county commission order this reassessment?
No. The county commission cannot even order a reassessment. The county commission are your legislators for the county. They fund things. They control nothing but the power of the purse. So when you're looking at what the county commission can do, the reassessment, the biggest confusion was is that property sales in Jefferson County had jumped substantially.
Yes.
So therefore, when your reassessment comes in, it is based on what the new prices of land is selling for. And a lot of people, they doubled in value. Your property is worth twice now what it was before. And that's where the mystery begins, when it's really not a mystery, is that you've got to look at it as, okay, we went from a $235 tax rate to $1.43 at that reassessment.
So people are unclear. That's called recapitulation, correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
And so when these state mandated assessments come up, the county has the opportunity to lower the property tax amount to bring in the same amount that it did when it was higher. So that the people are not absorbing that cost increase, correct?
Sure.
Does the county?
It's actually revenue neutral is what we call it.
But is it really revenue neutral?
No, it's not.
Is it a positive or a negative for the county?
It's actually a negative. The county actually didn't fare as well as people thought. They thought all these new houses are paying more tax. No, it costs more money to run the county because you added these houses. It's because your standard of living has been modified in the last four to six years so much that the people that's always lived here, you don't realize how much Jefferson County has grown and how much more we're actually paying for in its large numbers.
So when you all made this recapitulation to try to help the taxpayers in Jefferson County, you all lost money. It wasn't like you rolled that money into a general fund. You actually lost money off of it.
We sure did. And it was the tune of, it was over $100,000 that we actually lost by following the rule. Now, some of the cities didn't do that.
Right.
They took it at face value and stayed where they was at. And there was a lot of talk about it. But you know, I won't get into city business. We're in the county business. But you know, the average person, most of the time, is once we explain how this is done, done the reassessment, that is a driven revenue neutral thing that happened. Okay, then when we had to raise it six cents, we just broke even. We're going to have roughly $149,000 left out of that budget. And a penny in our budget right now is roughly $240,000 to $244,000.
So you have about a half a penny left.
We're going to have a half a penny left.
And the only reason that is the way that I understood it is because you can't go a half a penny. You can't go...
No. You either go a full penny or back up a penny.
Yeah. So you were either five or six and it took a little more than five to make it happen.
Right.
So for those who are trying to follow this, and it is difficult. It is hard to understand.
Sure is.
If you're not immersed in it, it is difficult to understand. But the truth is, the fact is that the Jefferson County Commission had nothing to do with the fact that there was a reassessment of property, nor what the reassessment was. That is all state mandated. And there's a formula that they use, that's an approved formula in order to, and not approved by you all, but approved by the state, in order to get these numbers.
Right.
The only thing, the only difference that you all did was you recapitulated to make sure they weren't paying high dollars. And then you had to have a six cent property tax increase. So let's talk about six cents. What six cents really means, because people think that six cents is a lot of money.
Six cents is roughly $1,450,050.
That's in large dollars for the county.
That's in large dollars.
For the county. So what does it mean to the homeowner? So I need the math. And there's a formula that you know well, but there's a formula that maybe everybody doesn't know well. So I'm going to tell them what the formula is. So you need to take your, look at your property assessment for the county. You take that assessment. Let's say it's $500,000. Let's say your property was assessed at $500,000. You multiply that by 25%, divide it by 100, and then multiply it by what the tax increase was, which was six cents. And that large number annually is $75 on a $500,000 house.
It sure is.
So if you own a million dollar house, it's $150 annually. So if you own a $500,000 house, that six cents costs you a large, maybe not even a large, I'm not a coffee drinker, but a decent sized coffee at one of the specialty coffee houses. So at one morning, you just drive on by, you know, and you've covered your taxes. If you own a million dollar house, it costs you $150 annually. And that's less than $13 for a month.
Well, I talked to one gentleman that owns quite a lot of land and he figured his property tax, and we're talking millions of dollars, his property tax went up like $2,200.
Right. It's not...
And you know, of all the feedback that I've got from what we had to do to the tax rate, next year is going to be a totally different year. We had to play catch-up this year. And you know, and I said it in our previous interview, I think I called a nickel and I missed it by a penny.
Yeah.
Because I lived the budget.
You missed it by a whole penny.
Every month, every month, I lived the budget. Now, some of our commission, they wait till two months before we got to pass a budget and they try to reschool themselves on the budget. And my advice to the general public is come to some of our meetings, learn how all the taxes are tabulated, learn what it's costing us, what is it trending? If you're concerned and you want to be involved, hey, we'll more than welcome you here. And you know, once you get involved, you will understand what it costs to pay people's payroll. You know, our payroll is getting to be our biggest expense. We don't pay as much money as we do in benefits. Because our benefits, we are in the upper tier of benefits.
Jefferson County employees enjoy really good benefits. And another thing that people have to, so the general misconception, yet another myth, is that the more people who live in Jefferson County, the better position that Jefferson County is in. And you touched on that a little bit. The cost of services go up. But also, is it not true that you have fundamental built-in increases that you have to address every single budget?
Sure. You know, we was looking at an 18% insurance cost increase right off the bat.
Right.
That's $18 on the hundred. Now, I haven't spoke to anybody that their insurance hasn't went up, you know, because everything is costing more. And we're dealing with larger numbers and the people that are still stuck in the past to when it was cheap, you know, you need to play catch-up. We got to get into the real world of figures and what it's actually costing us to operate. I'll be glad to walk anybody through it. You know, get involved in your government. Learn this upfront.
So the truth is that there are natural increases in the government, just like you have in your own home.
Sure.
Electricity goes up. Electricity goes up in all of your county buildings. It also goes up in the schools. It goes up everywhere. So you have to accommodate for that. Anything that increases in your normal life, the county also has to. So there is no stagnant number that you start with at the end, from one fiscal year to the other. You're always going to have to accommodate for some sort of increase.
We deal with that on a day-to-day basis. And if you go out and the gas goes up 10 cents on the gallon and you're filling up your car, it costs you two bucks extra this week. But when our gas goes up 10 cents, it costs us $40,000 or $50,000.
And so when, another factor that is factored into the budget is sales tax.
Yes.
So sales tax is fluid, you know, so you all take a certain percentage of that sales tax and you budget it because, from the last year, because you really don't want to budget the whole thing because you could go down.
More like about 80%.
Yeah. So that is, the property tax and the sales tax are your major avenues of funding. And then, of course, the wheel tax, but it is specific funding.
Sure.
It is not. So is there, or what, because this is another thing that we see on social media a lot and it is a myth. Jefferson County has central financing, correct?
Sure.
And that provides checks and balances for any kind of, let's say, fudging numbers. Let's just call it that. A lot of times on social media, you will see people come in and they'll say, oh, we need a DOGE investigation. A DOGE investigation.
We get that a lot.
Yeah. A DOGE investigation would not function in Jefferson County like it does in the national government. Your independent parties go through your central financing.
Well, see, we use the Act of 81 and we actually get a dose of DOGE every month. We close out every month with the comptroller. So we have to answer to every dollar that's spent on anything. And you know, when you're being boxed into each individual thing that you're doing, the actual department heads don't handle their own money. It has to come through the finance department. So it has to meet criteria. It is a double watch list.
And it is more than a double watch list because the finance department has multiple arms. It would require...
Sure is.
It would require an enormous amount of coordination to steal $100, let alone thousands of dollars. And I'm not even sure if you could do that. Because not only is the finance office looking at it, the mayor's office looking at it, and you're looking at it. And then, of course, the comptroller is looking at it. And our state comptroller doesn't let much pass by.
No. He's... No, we're actually ruled with an iron fist, is what I like to call it. And it's really a good thing, but you know, what made DOGE famous is in Washington DC, they were spending large amounts of money and nobody was seeing where the money went. And in Jefferson County, it don't happen that way. We get a long list of everybody that actually, how they spend their dollars every day in every department. So the department heads are looked at by the full county commission. If the commissioners choose to look at it or not, that's what prepares you for your budget when it comes up.
And on the DOGE level, a lot of, there was a lot of grant misappropriation internally, like from the government to the government. Does Jefferson County provide any grants to its own departments?
No.
There is no grant money exchanged from Jefferson County to its own departments? So that is not an avenue where money can be budgeted?
No.
Okay, so now, let's talk about another thing that's a big misconception. We've got a lot of myths going on right now in Jefferson County. I'm going to ask flatly, because you're a flat kind of guy. You just answered the question. How much do county commissioners make?
County commissioners make $300 a month. After taxes, that equates to $277 and some loose change. That's the way it's been. In 2010, when I come on here and I'll be finishing up 15 years, September 1st will be my 16th year here, and it's never changed. Now, the chairman, which I am the chairman, makes 600. So after taxes, it's low 570s. And after taxes and stuff, and you know, I have to be in probably four times the places that other commissioners do. But the key to this is we've never changed that. It was that way when I came here and it'll probably stay that way from now on. But you know, what you look at in the money is, we don't really, that don't really meet the expense. Because new commissioners have to go to school, they have to do training with C task, there's marks that you have to hit. We try to pay for some of that out of the budget. My biggest outgoing, my budget right now is legal defense, attorney bills, because it's costing us. When I first came as a chairman in 2014, $20,000, $21,000 paid our legal expense. We'll crack $60,000 to $65,000 this year.
Yes.
We did last year.
It's an enormous difference.
It's an enormous, enormous difference.
Estimate, how many hours for your $600 a month? How many hours do you put into Jefferson County Commission?
I'm going to say on the phone, talking to people, roughly 5,000 to 6,000 minutes a month. And you know, I'm actually getting a county cell phone here in the next little bit, so I'll actually have a phone just for county business, but that was on my personal phone. But as to actual work, I average anywhere from 25 to 30 hours. One month, I actually, my wife kept up at the time more than I did. And she said, do you realize that you've talked for two and a half hours on the phone tonight? And you know, I'm like, well, by the time I talked to five different commissioners, talked to some department heads and everybody that wants to talk to me, I said, I can see where that is. And I never really gave it that much thought, but I work for myself. So therefore, as I'm operating equipment through the day, I wear an earbud battery out.
Yeah. So you don't, commissioners that work for, are employed by somebody else. If there's a meeting during, there are often meetings during the day, committee meetings during the day. Their boss or their employers might give them time off to do that, pay time off. Some will, some won't. They don't have to. They're not mandated to have to do that, are they? I don't know if they are or not. But as far as, you have several that are self-employed and they are losing work hours when they do those things. So that's the $300. So for, to bust this myth, nobody on the Jefferson County Commission is making $196,000. No one is.
Nobody.
No one is.
But they may be a judge or two that does.
But he's not a county commissioner.
He's not a county commissioner.
And his pay is not paid by Jefferson County.
And see, the biggest misconception with county commission is that most people never understand is, we don't control any department. Some of our departments are actually elected by the people, some of them work straight for the mayor's office. We fund them. The only power we yield is power of the purse.
Right.
Is paying the bill at the end of the day. And you are actually a legislator. You're not a person that just walks in and tells everybody what they're going to do today. You work with people to find out what they need, the needs, wants, and gotta haves. You got to do gotta haves first. Needs and wants, you know, in this county, most time don't get funded.
Right. That is, that is the quandary of being, writing the check, but not being in charge as much with what the requests are. You know, those requests come in anyway. And as far as that $197,000 that they thought was getting paid by, some people on social media thought were getting paid by, to the county commission. Does the county commission pay our judges?
No.
Does Jefferson County pay our judges?
The state does.
The state pays.
And the state mandates, you know, the state does a lot of mandates to the county in that they base how they get paid.
Sure.
And they regulate that.
Sure.
So we really don't get a say-so in that.
That's right. So that particular, that's a state mandated position.
We don't even set the mayor's wages.
Yeah. There's several department heads that you don't set their wages on, correct?
That's right.
There's, you know, in that particular position, we have several judges. They all make the same salary, you know. I'm pretty sure they all make the same salary.
Real close.
Real close.
Real close.
And so they're right in that range and that's a state mandated pay that they make and it's paid by the state. So that really doesn't have a thing to do with the county commission. So, and so we have busted this myth. Nobody's getting wealthy sitting as a county commissioner. Or a school board member for that. I don't know what the school board...
You know, I find myself in a day's time, two to three hours a day, if I take the tidbits out, that I spend doing county business. And that's every day.
Yes. And actually, you are forbidden to take any kind of gifts.
I cannot take, I cannot accept anything from anybody.
Yeah. That's just, it's just not there, folks. So that one can be put to bed and put to rest. Jefferson County, there's no fudging of funds. It just is what it is. It takes money to run a county.
We actually file a statement of interest by every January the 30th. We have the month of January to file it. That states that any of our interests in our personal life hasn't changed. And if it has, how we get our money, they regulate that. They watch that.
Yes.
You have to be a, you know, Brother Trey down there in Nashville, he stays on top of that. He'll keep up with you.
Yes. He is, he is a tough taskmaster.
There you go.
And so where we sit financially in Jefferson County, there's just not really a way that anything is going on financially. And that has been the case for very many years. I know at one point, there was, 10 or 12 years ago, there was a situation in the finance office which was uncovered. It is not our current finance director's, several finance directors back.
Directors by us.
Back, yeah. And before, even before you came on the commission. So now, this may be common knowledge, but I don't think that it is. So the county finances, and I think this adds to some confusion. So our county finances are broken up into several different parts. And like, for example, when we did not have enough money in this county and you had to make cuts, some of the things that got cut were ambulances and police cars because they're on a regular cycle of replacement. And they were supposed to be replaced and we just couldn't afford it. And that is what precipitated this six cent increase because couldn't go another route without doing this.
Well, that's what happened when you got vehicles over 400,000 miles, you're just asking for trouble.
Sure.
And you know, the garage time's going to eat your lunch.
Sure.
You know, you can't afford to be broke down when you're waiting on somebody to respond.
Right. Right. And so other, other kinds of county budgets, including the school system, the highway department, they come with a maintenance of effort, correct? Can you explain to people what a maintenance of effort is?
Okay. A maintenance of effort is that the county commission cannot lower funding. You can only raise it. And what it does is it maintains that there is a certain level that they can never fall below. Like if you have a year that we come up real short on money. Okay, all we can do is tell them that, hey, you know, if you're down to your skeleton staff, we got to figure out where we're coming up with the money. Because we can't go below that. You know, the school system especially, but you know, the highway department, sheriff's office, you know, we can never just back up, you know, and say like, well, we're just going to cut 10% straight across the board. There's only part of that that you can actually cut.
So when people don't understand why...
It gets into non-essential services is what you get cut.
So you have to be very careful about how you allocate money to those departments.
Sure.
Because there are certain things that don't come under maintenance of effort, like capital projects, right? So a capital project, explain if you would, because not everybody knows.
Okay. Capital projects is what we set aside every year in the budget to build on our actual infrastructure of the government.
So this new school or new renovations or, I guess it's renovations at Jefferson Elementary School, that's a capital project.
That's a capital project.
So that doesn't affect your bottom line.
No.
But coming up in next year's budget, they're having to raise salaries.
Yes.
And that is a...
Now, that right there is where you get into maintenance of effort and that's where you're just taking another rung up the ladder. Because you know, you got your capital projects and then you got your salaries that's going to kick in. Because you're going to have to hire more people to take care of it. And you know, the school system right now is doing a really great job. I was at a meeting with them last night that, you know, they're doing a great job on their maintenance. They have brought the maintenance from the stone age up to current, them guys are putting in work.
Yeah.
And my hat's off to Tommy Arnold and what he's doing. He's done a lot of great and wonderful stuff for the school system. I really like the guy. He's always straight up. I'm a straight up guy and he always tells me a straight up answer. But you know, you can get hidden behind this because when you start hiring teachers, there's maintenance effort involved.
Right.
And the state sets the pay scale.
And the state is upping the pay scale in your next budget cycle, correct?
Sure are.
It is mandated.
They sure are.
There is no choice. The county commission can't do anything. The Department of Education can't do anything.
School board can't touch it.
School board can't touch it. It is a state mandated increase.
Yep.
And nobody's saying that they don't deserve it, but what everybody is saying is, it does have to be funded. So that falls to you all then, when it comes time. Because if the state mandates it, the state mandates it. So you know, it just kind of grows, doesn't it?
Yes.
It's just one, always one more thing.
I tell everybody it's the snowball effect. If you roll a snowball far enough, it'll be as big as your house.
Okay.
And it seems like every year that ball gets rolled just a little further down the road and it gets just a little bit bigger. And you know, it falls back to the old cliche of the guy that took the job working at the factory and he's going to get paid a dollar a day and double it every day he works. You know, we can't keep on growing at the rate we're growing. Because that guy making a dollar a day, sooner or later, he's rolling in the cash. He sticks with it four or five years, he's there. But you know, we can't keep on, at what point do you go past what the taxpayer can afford? That's where I live in the world of, okay, what can we afford as a community versus what our needs, wants, and gotta haves has got to be.
So let's talk about kind of the, one of the situations that's being faced by the county commission right now particularly, is the landfill. And it has been an audit finding for many years for Jefferson County.
Sure.
Because of the sale closure. So can you explain a little bit about that so people can understand where it's coming from?
Okay. What it is, the landfills had this looming cloud over their head for this closure for years, that there has to be X amount of money put in an account to pay for the finish of a sale before you start another sale.
And it's a hefty amount of money.
And you know, at one time, it was up six or seven million dollars.
Yes.
And see, it's the capital investment in the money they have on hand in the bank, because the landfill, outside of what pennies they get in two oh seven to actually run the county side of the landfill for household garbage. The commercial side has to live on what it makes. And you know, it's actually a business. The landfill's actually a business.
And they call that an enterprise fund.
It's, it's an enterprise fund, is exactly what that's called. And you know, when you, when you run the landfill, the tip and fees that you pay for stuff has to cover the cost of doing away with it. And right now, class three and class four are effectively shut down.
And can you explain why they are effectively shut down?
Well, they're effectively shut down because of the permit situation, leadership problems, problems not being taken care of. TDEC decided the renewal of their permit. And we're just now getting into the, actually, the intricacies of what's going on out there. And you know, it's, it's a classic example of, there wasn't enough oversight. The oversight should've been better, more people should've been watching, and this is gonna be our albatross for this year.
So, can you explain to people what the structure is? They have, they have an oversight committee, correct?
Sure, sure.
Uh, the county commission does not serve as an oversight.
The, uh, the mayor appoints three members oversight for the landfill. And that oversight, the, uh, the department head answers to this oversight committee. And you know.
So, it's like a board of directors?
It's just like a board of directors. And you know, if, um, i- if you get into a problem, and you're facing problems, and not enough people know what the problems are, that's when you really get into a, a bigger problem. And, and you know, the intricacies of it, right now, we're just in the opening stages of finding out what has happened. But you know, TDEC is not happy with how the landfill's being operated, the mess that it's in. I field complaints every day, I have zero control over it, but I fund it. But with the county taxpayer money for the county taxpayers' garbage. Any kind of commercial garbage above that, that's your class three and class four, you know, you got, you got all the different classifications to run the landfill, but what we've got is effectively, half the landfill's shut down, and it's costing us thousands of dollars. You know, we've done, put almost seven hundred thousand dollars into this, and we're not no closer to getting our license back. And I've been pushing the, uh, the oversight committee, and we have a new director, the last director, he resigned from his position. And you know, there, there's a lot of controversy into that. And there is a, uh, there's a lot of things that's gonna be looked into in the next couple of months. I talked with the chairman of the oversight committee, he's not happy at all with his findings. And at this time, you know, I don't know enough about it to explain a lot about the landfill. But I do know, there's a lot of bad problems there, and a lot of mismanagement.
And that is because, other than funding a part of the landfill, not even the whole landfill, other than funding a part of the landfill, actually, the county commission is kind of out of that.
That's right.
There's, you write the check for one part for the employees and whatever, for one part of.
Right.
But, but the rest of it is not something that you all deal with on a day-in, day-out basis. So, that is this, that is this year's problem, child, is what you're talking about.
That is this year's biggest problem that the county is gonna face, probably this year and next year. Is we've gotta get this, this landfill back in permit, we've hired a new director, Eric Lard. And, uh, he, he is, he is actually in-house and doing the best he can. But you know, when you've got a mess and you inherited it, you know, we got to get control of the whole thing. We gotta get TDEC in here, we gotta find out what they're actually wanting. TDEC sends letters. I haven't personally seen any of the letters, I haven't seen any of the correspondence, but I can grant you, they're not happy. And I don't see a permit coming, you know, they're saying, hey, we gonna get that permit in three months. Well, the problem is, you gotta fill out all the paperwork, not just part of it.
Hmm. So, that is going to be kind of this year's albatross.
That's it.
And is that going to cost money in the next budget season?
I'm gonna say, yes, it will, and if I have anything to do with it, I won't vote to spend another dollar out there until all these problems are on the road to being repaired.
So, you want transparency?
I want complete transparency, I want the complete show to be scrutinized. I wanna get key people in key jobs. We need people that, that's what they do is run a landfill. You know, it's hard to take somebody that is just a normal, good manager, and you put him in somebody else's world. It'd be like me running your newspaper, or you coming over to run my Tri-Cove's and Dozer's.
Yeah, you don't wanna do him that.
It's gonna take you a year or two to figure out what's going on, and, and I won't fall into that. We need professional help at that landfill.
Now, Jim, you've seen me drive, you don't want me driving your equipment. Um, so, what we're looking at is, is a, an internal problem at the landfill, and it is going to have to be fixed.
In my opinion, it's a total management problem. You need, you need good managers, you need good leadership, and this county has struggled with that for a few years in different areas of having a good leader. And you know, to me, that's the word. If you don't, like Ronald Reagan said, if you don't know what you're doing, find somebody that does, and they'll help you.
So, I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions, because, like I said, you're a, you're a pretty forthright guy. So, the wheel tax. It's thirty-five dollars. It has specific places that it goes.
Right.
And, so, I'm gonna ask you, how many vehicles do you have to buy a wheel tax for?
I buy eleven wheel tax stickers a year.
Eleven?
And all of my trucks are registered in Jefferson County, Tennessee. I no longer own trucks that run out of state, which has a portion.
Okay.
But I would say that I probably buy about as many of them as anybody does in the county of normal people.
And several of the county commissioners have multiple.
Sure.
Vehicles for their needs, employment needs, or business needs, or family needs. So, this is not a tax that hit the public, that didn't hit you personally.
That's exactly correct.
And you still support it, and you would support it tomorrow?
I sure do.
And you consider it to be fair? You've said that over and over.
It is the fairest tax that you will ever pay, because it affects everybody that owns a vehicle that uses the county services. If you drive a car in Jefferson County and you live here, you're gonna come in contact with our police, our ambulances, our fire service. You're gonna come in contact with the county highway department. You're driving on their roads. Everybody takes for granted that all these things, quote, exist. But they don't, they have to be paid for. You have to pay people to take care of stuff. And you know, to me, that's the cheapest you get by with. If you go to North Carolina, South Carolina, they tax your vehicle as personal property, just like this morning, I was paying my personal property.
Right.
On all the equipment that I own.
Right.
So, you know, the average homeowner that works a job doesn't get taxed for the vehicle that you drive. My, my personal vehicle that I drive on county business every day has an H4 commercial tag on it, because I have to have a commercial license to drive my truck in my business.
Right.
And I'm doing county business out of the same truck. That ain't me crying about it, it's just the fact that the county's never furnished me a vehicle to go anywhere in.
So, are there, what, what are the benefits to our property taxpayers to have a wheel tax? Does it keep your property taxes?
What it does is, that thirty-five dollar wheel tax made just under one and a half million dollars. Uh, Frank Herndon told me the other morning that that extra thirty-five dollars, in four hours in his office, made almost two thousand dollars in one day.
Right.
But what that does is, that spreads that money out to where it touches more people. It's just like the sales taxes, all inclusive, it gets everybody that you pay sales tax on. But just like the mineral tax that the commission was trying to push here a while back, half of what they was wanting to tax is agriculture, non-taxable, by the state of Tennessee. So, no matter what tax you come up with, state of Tennessee can say yes or no. Because, you know, the mineral tax, oh, well, we wanna tax iron ore, we wanna tax zinc or lime. Lime's agriculture, you can't tax it. It's tax exempt. And you can't tax zinc, because it's going from one mine to the other and not to the end user.
So, mineral tax is one that, that it, realistically, cause you all have looked at this two or three different times.
Sure.
What could a mineral tax bring in?
The, the placing of the mineral tax would cost more than it would bring in. Surrounding counties, I think Knox County brought in like fifty-five, sixty thousand. So, if you have to hire somebody and pay them forty to fifty to collect it, make sure you're getting your money.
It's, it's not.
It's really not worth it. If, if you're gonna go after money, you know, what we're looking at in this, short-term rentals.
Right.
You know, when we first started talking about short-term rentals, we're behind, we're way behind in this. Because other counties, they've done, changed them to commercial, cause they're commercializing their home, and they're renting it out as a motel.
Right.
So, it's not fair to people that actually own motels, that their Airbnbs are ruling the day.
And what are you all looking at, exactly?
What we're looking at is fees, inspections, and that money that it generates can help go to community development.
Right.
Because that money cannot be spent for just anything. It can't be spent for day-to-day budget expense. It can only be spent to help our economy.
So, it's, it's sort of like your tourism dollars.
It, it, well, tourism falls under the same thing.
Right.
With the money that we bring in, the hotel motel tax.
Right.
The short-term rentals, all of that money has to be spent for specific things. It can be infrastructure. You know, you can build a road, you can buy some land, we're fixing to look at here in the next little bit, buying some land that the county can own. And we're setting on about two point two, almost two point three million dollars of money that we can't just put in our budget and spend it, because we made it off the hotel motel tax.
And so, that short-term rental money will follow that same path.
Sure will, sure will.
Maybe it will give opportunity to build parks, to build, some of the stuff that.
Ball fields, a convention center, an ag center, we're looking at an ag center.
So, through those things, it helps your general fund, because those things bring in self-tax dollars. So, it's a trickle-down.
What, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to build an infrastructure that actually helps Jefferson County pay its bills.
Yeah.
Because us not having the factories that other counties have, and the business that other counties have, as a commission, we gotta quit running business out of town and welcome them in.
Right.
You know, it's just like the rock quarry in Piedmont that everybody's fussing and upping their arms about. That rock quarry generates thirty-five to fifty thousand dollars a month in sales tax for Sevira County, selling Jefferson County rock.
So, we need to get those tax dollars back into Jefferson County.
Well, you know, we're actually engaged in a lawsuit against the company that's running it. And you know, I can't really get into the details of it, but that, that's the tax money that's leaving here. And it'd sure be nice, and Piedmont could sure use the money.
Yes, okay, so, so, what, people who own short-term rentals, what kind of fees are you looking at? They're not absorbent fees, correct?
Well, no. You're, you're looking at, uh, we haven't got to the specifics yet, but it'll be in the neighborhood of three hundred and fifty dollars a year in fees to register, to be, to be inspected, for it to be done right, to make sure every place is safe, they got adequate parking. See, we got, we got Airbnbs right now over here on the lake, it don't even have parking. That they park in the road.
So, you're looking at less than one night's rental, in most cases.
Yes.
And then, and then the tax goes on the top of that, which is passed on to the consumer.
We can get the home, the hotel motel tax off of it, and see, we're starting to get the commercial tax revenue. If you live in a residential house, and you're renting your house out, we're gonna charge you a commercial rate, because you're running a commercial business. You're wearing our infrastructure, you're using our, our, our sheriff's department's being run to death by it. And you know, we're having to send out, I think we're up to eight detectives now. People rent these homes, and then they all have problems, and they all want accident reports done, and they want somebody stole this and stole that, and, you know, spoke with the sheriff the other day, and he was putting up with a pretty rowdy day.
And if you're looking, if, if you are an Airbnb, or, or a law, a short-term rental owner, and that formula that we talked about earlier about the property taxes, which was your assessment times twenty-five percent divided by a hundred, on the commercial, and I asked this question, cause I did not know, it, it, it would be, if it's just strictly commercial, it would be forty percent.
Forty percent.
So, it would be your tax appraisal times forty percent divided by a hundred. So, that's, that's the difference. It's not, it's not quite double, it's.
It's all where you, it ain't quite double, but, uh, it's all where you put that decimal point when you multiply.
Yes. It is. So, um, another thing that, that I wanted to touch on before we go, and, and we've taken a lot of your time, but you've been very generous with us. You have a county commission meeting, first one of this fiscal year.
Sure, Monday night.
Well, is there gonna be anything on the, about the election commission that's brought up on this? Or the, people have been concerned about the election, uh, changes at the election office.
Right.
First of all, do you all have anything to really do with those changes?
We have no control of it, it's just like at the landfill, it's the same, the exact same business model. You know, there's an oversight committee. They look after that department. What we fund in that department, part of it's state main, uh, bedated, part of it is the county pays for our county elections. But, how it works is, there's an oversight committee for everything that we don't directly control. And that oversight committee is critical. And, and my, my words to anybody in the public, if you wanna get involved, see me, see the mayor, get, get involved in the oversight. Get involved in the numbers, learn what's going on in your county, how the county operates. And once you learn it, you'll understand, and it will debunk ninety percent of what's going on on Facebook today. You know, I can, I can attend a meeting, and I know what happened in that meeting, and then I read it on Facebook, and I'm like, was I really there? Cause you know, the people that's commenting really do not understand what they're actually talking about.
Yeah, yeah, we see that a lot. Um, so, coming up on this agenda, is there anything that stands out to you that, uh, a long conversation, or is this business as usual?
Well, the, the only long conversations we're gonna have is, we're gonna talk about eighty-six acres over at the Joe Moore Farm on Valley Home Road. That is a piece of property that we are actively looking at to buy for the county. And it's potential that we could actually have a new county road going to the landfill off Valley Home Road, where you don't have to drive through the other neighborhoods. And we could actually have land that would be available for purchase, that we could actually do some nice things.
And that could be done with tourism, could that be done with the tourism?
That can be done with our tourism money that we got laying here.
So, that doesn't have anything to your general fund, it doesn't cost the property taxpayers a dime?
And the thing about it is, it won't, it won't cost the taxpayers a dime. The buildings that we build, as long as we use this money, Jefferson County can actually own something that belongs to Jefferson County and don't belong in a city.
All right.
We're not being anti-city, we're just saying it's time for the Jefferson County public taxpayer, that they need to own something, a nice recreational park, that's paid for by the people that come here and rent here.
Yeah, that's a great, that would be a great benefit.
To the people in Jefferson County, it's free.
Right, that's, that's great. So, um, I know there's a few other agenda items in a public hearing about some rezoning, and about some zoning differences that are gonna be going on in Jefferson County.
Especially the campgrounds in the C2, is, you know, that, that ball's been rolled around a lot.
Right. And so, that would be of interest to the public, as far as, you know. And then, um, another thing, I saw that there's gonna be some appointments to the election commission. Those are mayoral appointments, correct?
Sure.
So, there's, that could be of interest, because there is, there is interest in what is happening at the election commission. Um, however you feel about it.
When the conversation got started, everybody got up in arms about the election commission, and really, I think it got out of hand that the, uh, the oversight committee decided they was ready for a change. And, and I think the director had done made his wishes known that he was wanting to retire. And then I think there's some kind of confrontation into the middle of all that.
And it is, it has kind of been back and forth.
And my word to the general public is, just remember, the oversight committee is not always, quote, in cahoots with the people that's running it. That oversight committee, my hat's off to them, they voted their mind, they voted unanimous. This wasn't a split decision. It wasn't a one, it, it was completely one-sided, they voted for change. And I respect their opinion to that. And, uh, you know, we do follow a democracy, but we are a constitutional republic.
So, that is, that will only come before you all to confirm.
Sure.
For confirmation. Those names are not brought by you all?
Straight up, yes or no, we, we just approve it.
Okay, so that's, but I, I do think that that's an area, it has, it has gotten considerable interest.
Mm-hmm.
Um, almost an unusual amount of interest.
Well, it was an intrigue, because that comes from something that, that the average citizen is washing, watching what's happening nationally, with Trump and the presidency, and stolen elections. And naturally, they wanna bring it back home with them. So, you know, I respect people that wanna get involved, the person that wants to ask questions, especially with me. There's no such thing as a stupid question. If you don't understand something, ask somebody to explain it.
Sure, I call every once in a while and ask a question. What, what just happened there?
Yeah.
And, and that is true. Um, and you have county commissioners, of course, Chairman Carmichael is always available. You have county commissioners in your own district that should be available to answer questions. And all these oversight committees and those people should also be available to answer questions.
And if they're not available, you need to call me, the mayor, and we'll see that they get available.
Right, cause that is.
Because that's their job. I take my job very serious, we're not playing government, we're actually operating government.
Right.
And I can't stress that enough, that this is not a toy. And I, and I speak to the commissioners regularly about that.
And part of what we wanted to do here was debunk some myths. And part of what we wanted to do here was debunk some myths from people who are just working on supposition, rather than fact. And I think we've done that today. Um, and I appreciate your time. County commission has gone to a meeting a month, correct?
Sure.
Now, there's no work, is there a work?
One meeting, there's no longer a work session, so that changes how I operate just a little bit.
Right.
And, uh, you're not going to see a real big change, but the biggest thing is, it's newly state-mandated that, when I hold a vote, I have to now ask the commission if they have a problem with any one voting.
Oh, okay.
In this last meeting, we had a gentleman from Straw Plains that come in and voted as for a budget. Well, come to find out, that he had actually, he had, he worked in the sheriff's department in Knox County, and he now come back to work in Jefferson County. So he did not work for Jefferson County when he voted. But see, anytime you got a county employee actually on the county commission, there's a lot of controversy going on. And I'll debunk that right now. The first thing I did when it was brought up to me is, I looked and seen when he actually become an employee. We voted on the 27th, and he did not become an employee to July the 2nd.
So it's all clear, he did not have to abstain?
He voted for a budget. I checked with his superiors, and they said, no, he did not work for us then.
So he did not, normally, uh, you have some who abstain.
C task, C task actually has a different opinion of that. They call that a direct violation, but it's not going to change the vote. But, you know, there's, the whole, the whole county commission's going to get chastised for it, because he actually changed jobs and didn't tell the chairman, that'd be me.
Right.
I needed to know that he was coming back to Jefferson County, and that way, I know if a certifiable vote is not.
And has the, has the mayor, because the mayor has so many days to veto a vote?
Sure, sure.
Did it pass?
Yes, it did.
It passed?
I watched him sign it.
So, so we, so that budget is put to bed?
Yes.
We are moving on to new things in Jefferson County?
We are moving on to, we're going to get this landfill fixed. That's my pet peeve for the summer. County commission, we got to, we, we got to get this short-term rental agreement through legal. We got to get this up. I would like to see us be able to buy that land. That's big on my agenda, that we can actually use some of that money, and we can actually start building a little wealth in Jefferson County. Let's move forward.
Yeah, do we have a, in this upcoming year, you have a meeting every month, which is different, it was quarterly meetings, does...
Third Monday of every month, pretty much.
Is there anything different in the quarters, or are all the meetings just the same? They're just regular meetings?
All the meetings will be regular meetings, it's just quarterly, you actually get a report.
Okay.
The reports will come in at the same time, it's just, you don't get as much time. When we had a work session, the commissioners had a week to decide how they felt about something. And now, I see that if the commission's not ready to vote, it'll go from one month to the next.
The roll, the last year, the roll it took.
You'll see a lot more things that, that rolls over, that, anything that's controversy, or got anything to do with it.
But it would still happen faster than another quarterly meeting?
Sure.
Because, you know, it's going to be...
Me, I like the quarterly meetings, because it put everybody in the position that they made sure they come to that meeting. And right now, the attendance is bad on the county commission. Everybody says, oh, you need fewer commissioners, so at the vote meeting the other night, we just had 16 people there.
Right. And, and I, that is another thing that has been, that this, the structure of this county commission has been this way for many, many years.
Many years.
Yes. Um, thank you very much for coming in. We appreciate you taking your time to help people understand what's going on.
Thank you for having me, I'm glad to help.
It's, it's always good when you can hear from a source of, uh, truth, so you can make decisions based on fact, rather than based on...
Sure, sure.
...myths that are being put out there in different ways.